Yay. On April 28th, 2023, for the Portland Children's Levy Tax Measure. Good afternoon. My name is Harmony Kidos. I'm the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. Welcome, everyone. The TSCC is a 100-year-old community oversight commission established by the Oregon Legislature. The commission oversees the budgets of all TSCC member taxing districts and annually conducts a thorough budget review and certification process. Another of TSCC's responsibilities, as detailed in state law, is to hold public hearings on all property tax measures proposed by municipal corporations under the commission's jurisdiction. TSCC holds public hearings to give the public an opportunity to learn more about the proposed measure. We ask questions that we think a typical community member might ask. In that sense, we're here today to represent those community members who may not be able to ask questions of you directly. We encourage community members to attend these public hearings and make comments and ask questions. Minutes of this public hearing will be prepared and retained as a permanent record of the proceedings. TSCC does not take any action on the proposed tax measure and does not advocate for a position on the measure either. This hearing is strictly to promote information sharing. I'll now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Margot Norton. This is my eighth and final year on the TSCC. In my former life, I was a government finance officer. My last post was as the CFO at Metro. I also serve on the city's Arts Education and Access Fund Oversight Committee, the arts tax, but that does not preclude me from participating in this hearing.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Offsang Keyhem. I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. And like Margot, this is my eighth and final term, so a little bit of senioritis. When I am not doing TSCC, I work as a project manager at OHSU, and I don't have any conflicts with the district that would be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Hello, my name is Mark Wible. This is my sixth year with the TSCC. I just recently retired from the Senior Policy Analyst position in Portland State University at the President's Office, and I have no conflicts of interest with the Children's Levy.
I'm Allegra Willhite, Executive Director with TSCC, and this is my second year with the organization.
And I'm Toni Vechart, Budget Analyst with TSCC.
And like I said, my name is Harmony Kidos. This is my fourth year with TSCC. My second is chair. I am, right? Second is chair. Oh. I work in K-12 science assessment and curriculum, K-12 education. I have two kiddos, ages six and nine. Highly invested in the Children's Levy on a personal level, but have no conflict of interest in my role with TSCC. Would members of the district please introduce themselves?
We're the members of the district. Got it. It's language that is not one that I use very often. Yeah, my name is Dan Ryan. I'm a Commissioner here for the City of Portland, and I have the honor of overseeing the Portland Children's Levy.
Bernie Gonzalez, Portland City Commissioner.
And Commissioner Rubio, you're virtual?
Thank you. Yes, sorry. That my camera's not working. Commissioner Rubio, happy to be here.
And how about we introduce the staff?
I'm Lisa Pellegrino. I'm the Director at the Children's Levy.
Thank you.
John Kelly, I'm the Financial Analyst at the Children's Levy.
Right. Is that what you needed?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great.
I'll now call on any members of the public who'd like to speak. Each person is limited to three minutes of public comment, and we'll let you know when you're nearing the end of your time. Allegra, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, we have none that signed up to speak. Kayla, have you had anyone else checked out?
Okay, then we'll dive into our questions.
Can I go ahead and just do a brief intro?
Oh, sure. Sure. We're happy for you to give a brief introduction.
Absolutely. If I would have just barged in, that's what I would have said.
No, that's great.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for being here. It's great to see you in person. And congratulations, and thank you for your service, particularly those of you who are in your final year of service. Thank you so much. My name, well, thank you for being here for this hearing, too. It's a program that's really near and dear to my heart. On the first day, I was, after the election, when the mayor gave me assignments, and this was one of my assignments. It felt really good because of my years and years of advocacy for children and youth, being a former school board member, and then leading the school's foundation in All Hands Raised. So it was really a great honor to be put into this, to be fit into this spot. And I'm just honored also to have some colleagues here today, both Commissioner Gonzalez and also Commissioner Rubio. I took on this assignment from Commissioner Dan Saltzman, and it's really been great to also continue the legacy of the Children's Levy. One of the things that's so great about this levy is its consistency in leadership over the last 20 years. Steady leadership, steadfast financial oversight has allowed the levy to be nimble, adaptable, and accountable, with constant improvement. With that, I'd like to introduce, and you heard them earlier, but Lisa Pellegrino, the longtime Director of the Children's Levy, and her financially, John Kelly, who's with us in person. They're going to be diving in, and they'll be able to answer the questions with more detail. And so I want to make sure that you knew that as we go forward. Thanks again.
Great. That's a good segue into our first question. This is the 20th year roughly of the Portland Children's Levy. Can you talk about what's changed in the last 20 years, particularly in terms of program priorities, emphasis of the grants, and looking back on the program, which accomplishments are you most proud of?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Director Pellegrino.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Okay, well, first I'll talk about some of the changes that have been made over the 20 years' time, and particularly around the program emphasis. So about 15 years ago, we added a program area that would focus on foster youth, and we did that really in response to data coming out showing pretty consistently poor outcomes for foster youth, and also very serious overrepresentation of Black and Indigenous children in that population. So we really have worked over time of funding in that area to increase availability of culturally specific services for those overrepresented populations in foster youth. And just recently, and that, just to give you an example, that's a little bit more recent, so that was a longer-term shift of emphasis. But recently, in that program area, we got a lot of feedback from funded programs and from DHS for a need for foster care prevention services for some youth whose families were involved with DHS but hadn't been removed from their homes. So we made a shift to allow programs to serve some of those youth as well, and prevent movement into foster care. And then the other really big focus area that was added about 10 years ago was a hunger relief program area, and that was done in response to pretty significantly high food insecurity rates in the state of Oregon. Even now, today, we are still in the bottom half of states for food security. And the pandemic has exacerbated that, so I don't see that that need has decreased. And I would say that that's been, you know, focusing on that has been really important, as it turned out, in the pandemic. So that gives you a little bit of a sense of how we respond to both data and community input about what's important over time, and we add program focus areas accordingly. As far as achievements, it's hard to pick over 20, even what I would, what I would most elevate, but I would say a few things. Providing supportive services that really wrap around families and children when they're, before they arrive at school, and then after and before the school day, and as they're exiting the school system. So the school system is one of the biggest supports for children and families, and we are striving to wrap around that day and provide additional supports, sort of after the school bell. We've also partnered, had long partnership with Multnomah County and federal 21st Century School Programs, when they were working to expand the Schools Uniting Neighborhood Program, which is the after-school extended-day wraparound service program that is now in 80 schools. When we started, it was in maybe 12 schools. So that was a big achievement, be able to help the county. The county is the big lifter on that, but we were a strong partner. We've also really expanded support for culturally specific agencies so that they could expand their services to their communities, and that's been kind of a 20-year-long effort. And then last, and most recently, I would say we're really proud of working with grantees very flexibly to respond to the pandemic, to whatever needs were coming forward with children and families. And that is very consistent feedback we received as going through those years that partners really appreciated. They could pivot to provide mental health support where needed, to provide activities for kids when they were in lockdown with their families, to help families with digital access when they had to suddenly do everything virtually, and to provide increased food supports when kids were not going to school before that system had all been figured out, when they couldn't get meals at school any longer when we went into lockdown. So really, you know, supporting them to pivot and finding flexibility to do that. So those, that's, I'm happy to take questions. Those are the things I would name top of my list.
I think that's a great start. Matt, was Matt able to join us online?
I'll take the second one.
Great. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So there's been a considerable focus on early childhood programs with a, you know, if you look at the spectrum of all the different periods of time during a development of a child that you could focus on, early childhood seems to be a real priority. And in fact, 29% of grants for '22, '23 went toward this focus. But there are other governments that are also focused on this area, from State Department of Education to PPS, to Preschool for All, et cetera. How are you blending your efforts with these other jurisdictions? And are there other priorities you could be addressing as the jurisdictions increase focus in this area?
Yeah. Lisa, before you jump in with more details, I just, I really appreciate this question, particularly as it relates to the pre-K for All. So on the Allocation Committee sits Chair Vega Peterson. She was the inspiration behind that, and has been really close to the pre-K for All. We've had really good conversations of late to make sure that we can continue to be nimble and adjust accordingly. So one of our adjustments will be the fact that there is that big infusion of investment in an area that's been needed for some time. Too many kids start behind. As I always pictured it this way when I was in that sector, is, you know, you're starting a race, and the kids are at least 10 yards behind, so it's really hard to ever catch up. So we're really smart to be a state that's in a local area that's really investing in our kiddos from zero prenatal all the way to kindergarten. That said, she's talking to the current people who are, current organizations who are receiving these investments. We want to see it pay out with the current, they're in the middle of those investments because they're longstanding grants. But as we move forward, we're going to look to being agile and see how more of these funds can shift to the, to the youth years, to the mentoring programs and such. So there will be some adjustments being made, and you should see that when we do the next granting of the next long-term commitments, which would come, of course, if we're lucky enough that the voters approve the levy. But I just want you to know that that's in motion, and I appreciate that that's been called out. There will be some investments still to early childhood, kind of like what Lisa spoke to earlier. My experience in this space has always been that our children, when they're in school, which is 18% of the time, do really well. It's that, the evenings, the summers, the weekends, where families that don't have the same amount of resources have always fallen further behind. And so the Children's Levy's always been there for that. I call it extended learning, which is really important as we come out of COVID. As you know, it's been devastating for children. And we will look at which programs need some of that same wraparound support in the early levels. So it's not like it'll completely go away, but there will be some adjustments. And Lisa can give some more details to the other questions when you talked about the federal government and such.
I just had a little follow-up. I know that your tenure at All Hands Raised was a lot about data.
Yeah.
And finding those inflection points where students, children begin to struggle. And was this, some of this decision to, by the levy, was that based on some of the data from All Hands Raised? Was there a connection between the two organizations that may have helped in making that decision?
Lisa was on the Steering Committee, so I want to say yes. But I will say that the flattering part about being the CEO of All Hands Raised is how many around the state, especially locally, used our data points to help guide their work as well, because we were just objectively providing it for all of those working with children and youth. Yeah.
Thank you.
But Lisa, you can, you can tell me more.
Well, I would say I would confirm absolutely we use their data. That was a, that was a key service that All Hands Raised, you know, provided for the rest of the community in putting out those reports, and we use that very much to think through about, you know, where services should be directed. And I just, I would echo Dan in just saying, yes, we are literally in active conversations with the county about how to transition the preschool slots that we're currently funding over to Preschool for All. They, you know, they're, they're just in their second year, so they have been ramping up. So it's going to take a minute to transfer those slots over, but that is the plan. And then just because you asked about what, what kind of priorities might be emerging if funding is moved away from early childhood to some extent, a couple of things there. One, I want to remind, as Dan pointed out, that we do support a lot of services that are for children zero to three. So before they get to preschool, we are funding a lot of those type of services, and I don't imagine we would just continue. I mean, early childhood has the best ROI, as they say, return on investment, that we can make in kids. You know, investing early is really important, so I wouldn't want to see shift away from zero to three. I would say based on feedback that we've seen coming from grantee partners and from other tables that we're sitting at, there are some priorities I would imagine would begin to come to the fore, although we do a community engagement process, so we're going to have to listen and see what comes up. But what we've been hearing so far, as Dan mentioned, support for older youth as they're transitioning to post-secondary school and career. Violence prevention programming in the current era is also coming up a lot. And I would say support for social, emotional learning and health. There's a real mental health crisis. I would imagine if you're involved in children and youth work at all, you are aware of that. And that's been, we've heard that a lot from our grantee partners. And then there was just, I think, a poll down of middle school teachers at PPS, for instance, that have, you know, just really highlighted how behavior and mental health is a significant issue. So I can't imagine that those will not be on the radar screen.
Thank you.
Well, as the former CFO, I get all the money questions.
I've noticed that.
Isn't that amazing?
What are you going to do next year?
So let's talk a little bit about the levy's fund balance. We did receive this morning your five-year plan, so John knows what I was looking at. But, I mean, the levy's pulling in low $20 million in tax revenues, and your fund balance has been in the mid-teens. That's about, I mean, that's more than half of what you take in in an annual period. Now, I know, as a CFO, there's a really good purpose for fund balances. I mean, you have the period between July and November, before the new tax revenues come in. You may have made multi-year grants where you need to hold the additional future years in balance, but still, that's a mighty, robust fund balance. So the questions are, is there a specific target that you think you need so that we can have a context of how much of this substantial balance is there for spending? But beyond that, are there capacity issues? What are the obstacles to getting that money out in your grants?
I'm going to handle this one.
John, before you go there, can I just do a big picture?
Yep.
Big picture, I was sworn into office in September of 2020, and I, my first meeting was the next day in this role. And it was when all the schools were still shut down. The nonprofit partners were also trying to figure out how to do in-person learning. So the first meeting was about this topic, was how to get the capacity built so that they could expend the funds. And so I just want you to know that it's been an active conversation with Allocation Committee as well. And your questions are great. Take it away, John and Lisa.
It's very much on our minds. Our goal is not to keep very much at all. Half a million has typically been our historical, okay, let's, let's get it out the door. So...
You're substantially behind goal.
I will explain. So there are two reasons why fund balance accrues. One is revenue over, over projections. So we base our grants on projections. You know, we're doing like a set of three-year grants on projections that are a year or six months old when the grants go out the door. And so there's one source. And the other more significant recent situation is underspending. So all of our grants are cost reimbursement, and so if the grantees don't spend the dollars, we can't pay them the dollars. And so that, I'll get into a little more detail on that part of it in a minute. We haven't always had a huge fund balance. In 2000, in the aftermath of the recession in 2008, it took a few years to hit us, but we did get down to one, only $1 million left in the, in the bucket. And we actually had to make cuts to grants. Had we not made cuts, it would have, you know, we would have spent every dime we had. So we had to make cuts. There's always this lag of, we do the granting, and then the actual revenues come in. So that, as you can imagine, that picture gets a little bit complicated. The other issue is, we try to keep programming consistent for the community and avoid abruptly cutting off services. So there's also this dance of balancing the grant levels over time. I wouldn't be a good accountant if I didn't have a spreadsheet. Did you see this?
Oh, yeah.
We sent this out. So this is our five-year plan. It's part of the, it's a required part of the city budget. And the top line is, is the fund balance. As you can see, the current year, the beginning of the year, the estimate was 13.8, and we hope to get that down to 10.7 by the end of this year. And over the next several years, maybe in '27, '28, it'll be $30,000. I don't think so. But you can see, the plan is for the funds to get spent. I mentioned earlier the, the issue of grantee underspending. So historically, we have a 3% to 5% underspend per year, so that, that wouldn't result in a huge fund balance. But the last two years, two fiscal years, it was over 15%. And the grant levels have gone And the grant levels have gone up. So 15% of $24 million is a bunch of money. And so that's, that's another issue. So even this, as I, as I reviewed it this morning, you could take a look at the grant levels, which are the top of the expenditures for the current year, $26.4 million, $26.5 million, hopefully going out the door. It's not going to be that much. There's going to be significant underspending. So you can see the problem. The next two years, $26.9, $28.8. That's the hope, but again, if the underspending happens. So for the first time in this recent renewal, Lisa and I sat down and then, of course, talked with Commissioner Ryan, said, let's build in more underspending into the, into the model. So, so let's grant out more than, than we know is coming in because we know there'll be underspending. So we're working on it. It's, it's a live issue for us for sure. Commissioner Hardesty, a couple of years back, said, you've got a lot of money sitting there. Let's get that out the door. We're like, we're trying. The other issue is the terms of the grants. We just finished a three-year grant cycle. We renewed those grants for two, two more years. So there's kind of five years of, of funding level that gets set up at one time. So, yeah, it's our goal to get it out the door.
I, I appreciate that your spreadsheet shows your intention. 20 years of history is hard to ignore.
Agreed. Well, again, 2012, we had to make cuts. So it got down to $1 million. I mean, the goal was to get it to maybe half a million, but it didn't quite get there.
Well, I wish you success on your intention.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, if I could, if I could interject this one thing, I would just say that, you know, when we did the 18, when we did the 1920 funding round, the allocation committee very deliberately allocated that fund balance to the three-year grants and then held some so we could continue at that same funding level for the two-year renewals. So they did allocate the money that was over our revenues, but people didn't spend it because staffing, I don't know if people are aware, but trying to find staff right now for in-person jobs at nonprofits that pay less than everybody else has been a huge barrier. And so the underspending is, is in this moment, is very much related to pandemic conditions. So the whole sector is undergoing a correction. And we are hoping that, you know, they're revising, many agencies revising pay scale, work weeks, work demands to try to attract people to open positions and contend with this preference for remote work that's happened. So it is, it is definitely an issue, but it is one that they are, people are actively trying to solve. So I guess I want to be clear that we did allocate the fund balance to the grants. It was not like it wasn't allocated, but people didn't spend at the rates that they anticipated when the pandemic hit, you know, it was a very unusual situation.
And as a member of the allocation oversight committee, this has been a frequent conversation just of late because it is lingering. And so I did notice that the staff worked with a couple of accounts and then they adjusted how much they would spend. And so we have to keep doing that because they're, because of the issues that we talked about, especially this really grim challenge with getting enough employees to actually get the money out and more importantly, to provide the services for children and youth. That's the biggest issue I think that we're facing right now with a lot of our nonprofits. And so we want them, obviously, to expend this money. But I do appreciate that the staff is having those conversations with each account and they're bringing it to us and they're mitigating as we go along. We need to stay on top of this one for sure.
Capacity in the system is something that we are concerned about. And when we do our budget hearings, we, last year particularly, but we'll be following up this year in terms of asking, but that was a question to Multnomah County for their preschool for all. Is there going to be competition from the private market? Are you going to be pulling people from there? Will that create a capacity issue in the system? So I appreciate it's something that you're going to be keeping an eye on because I think that is an obstacle to spending this money.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I have, I have a follow-up on this. This is really great conversation. But I think the next question is going to feel very similar. You know, Margot asked kind of about the money and now I'm going to ask about the children, the receiving. So I imagine there will be some parallels and maybe we can cover my follow-up then. So my, our next question then is when we last spoke with the city to talk about the children's levy, the numbers at that point of children served, so it was in the 1617 year was over 11,000. And then per the budget materials we received leading into this in 1920, that had dropped to 10,575. And the levy now supports approximately 10,000 children. Can you talk to us a little bit about the decrease in number of children served and what we should be, you know, projecting forward? Is the trend going to kind of continue to slow down or are we going to see it ramp up?
Director Pellegrino, why don't you get us started on this?
Yeah, so a couple of things to keep in mind as we think about the numbers. So the levy is focused on funding proven programs that achieve measurable results first and foremost. And we're focused on funding quality program and that, quality programming. And that means that we are not only focused on the number of children that a program serves. So when the committee is considering which programs to fund, they're looking at a lot of factors, not only how many children are served. In general, the mix of grants that are served that any, that are, that are funded at any given time are going to fund programs with a range of services. So some programs are serving smaller populations with more intensive services and some programs are providing more light-touch services to a larger number of youth. So when that happens, you're going to get fluctuations in the total number served, depending on what that mix is. So I just want me to keep that in mind because it's not, it's not, like in 1617, there was one set of grants funded. Then there were a different set of grants funded in 1920. And now there's yet another different set of grants funded. So those are not all the same programs. It's not as if the same programs were serving ever fewer children. So the mix of programs is changing over time. The other thing to keep in mind is the pandemic, you know, like as I was just saying about staffing, really affected in some cases the number of children that could be served. Both because you, if you didn't have staff, you couldn't necessarily deliver services to as many children. And sometimes when, in the years where there was lockdown and all the services were going online, you didn't necessarily engage as many kids in services. There was more one-on, more of a focus on one-on-one service than group services. And just to, to sort of round out the numbers, in 2122, the non-hunger relief program served around 8,600 children, which was about 93% of the collective goal for number of children to serve in those program areas. So they, they edged back up toward what their goals are. The hunger relief program served 17,000 children in 2122, which was 37% above their collective goal. So there was still huge demand for hunger relief services. Those programs really pivoted to react and serve. So the number of children that we serve in the future is going to depend on the mix of program. So as we just said, that there'll be shifting priorities, different kinds of programming might get funded. You can't, I can't, we can't predict exactly how many kids are going to be served because it will depend on that mix. We're, we estimate basically between 8,000 and 10,000 children as we head into another funding round, served in non-hunger relief programs and in the neighborhood of 10,000 to 15,000 children in hunger relief programs. But I just want to caveat that, that it depends on, I mean, the community engagement process and the allocation committee interactions that we're going to go through around how to allocate the broad fund to programming could influence those numbers as well as what type of programming the community is wanting to see. And that could influence the numbers as well.
I just want to add my two cents on this, which is bigger picture, we learned that because the structures that we partner with, such as schools being shut down, really was a handicap because so many of the nonprofits partner in those same structures of time and place. So that adjustment really did get us behind. I also think it's important to say this, that it's an important metric and it's an overblown metric on the number. It's more about impact. I always use the term, there's high visibility, low impact. You get a lot of attention for it. But what did it really do to make that child be successful in school and move on and have a great life? And then there's lower visibility, high impact. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. So I'm just saying that I think that it's important that we continue to measure the impact and the results that we're getting from our investments. And I do think the number of children served and youth is an important metric, but I think it gets overblown sometimes. And I can give you a story if you want.
Can, can I?
Should I do this? A former mayor just asked me once, like, should we keep funding these field trips with mentors every summer? And I experienced quite a few of those and there were a lot of children and they'd drive by for about an hour and they'd listen to adults talk. And I think they enjoyed their McDonald's lunch more than listening to adults talk about their jobs. Or should we pivot the money towards internships for the summer, which was going to serve maybe 10% of the other program? It's the easiest answer. I go definitely the internships because that might have low visibility in terms of numbers, but the impact is tremendous for people to actually get a work experience while they're a teenager. So I'm just saying that it's really important to always look at that evaluation as well.
Can you, can you just, that's a great anecdote. Can you share a couple of the other metrics that you all are looking at and examining in the, in the cycle? What is that impact? If it, you know, we're looking at dollar spent or children served, but what, you know, what would you say to voters about the impact the levy's having?
I look at the data at the meetings, but right now, Lisa, get us started on that because you live it every day.
So we look at, we look at every, every single program that is funded by the levy has a whole set of goals. So they have a goal about the number of children they're going to serve. They're going to have a goal about the number of activities and the types of activities they're going to provide to children or their families. And they have a goal for participation. How much do we expect that child or family to come and attend the service? And then we have outcome goals that are measured through some kind of, you know, there's different sorts of ways we measure outcomes. So like in early, and we, the outcomes, there are a lot of them because we fund programs through the whole age range. So there's more than 200 outcomes that are tracked by the programs that we're funding. We do an overall metric on the percentage of outcomes that are met in any given year by the, by the, all the grantees. And we also look at by program areas. So for instance, early childhood, one of the major outcomes we're tracking is are kids on track for the developmental milestones? Okay, so that's one of the major things you're looking at before they're, with young children. So there's an assessment tool and we look at the percentage that makes that. So typically, I would say we're averaging between 80 and 85% of children in the programs, early childhood programs for funding are on track to the developmental milestones or they're being referred to supportive services if they're not on track. So, and then referrals are, you know, they make sure that there's an actual handoff. So that's just an example. There's a lot of outcomes that we track and I could give you more information about them if you're interested. I don't have all of the figures at my fingertips right now.
That was helpful, thank you.
I guess Harmony's question was really similar to mine. And there's another question that I'll ask if, if time allows. But just so that I make sure that I'm understanding correctly, Director Pellegrino, I completely appreciate the answer, which I think is a good one, that there's been a shift from low-impact, high number of programs to more higher-impact, lower number of headcount programs. And I want to make sure that I understood, is that kind of what you're saying? Is the main driver over, you know, this period from whatever, 2016 through 2020 or something? I mean, was that, is it fair to say that that was the main driver of the kind of decrease of whatever, 10% or something of folks or children served? Yeah, okay.
The mix, the mix of programs, absolutely.
Yeah, perfect. I appreciate that.
We've talked a lot about impact and all of the internal measures that you track. Best practice is also to look externally for expertise. And I was gratified to see that in 2019, you contract with Portland State University. Go Vikes!
No conflict of interest though.
We heard that earlier.
Good point. Not anymore, I'm retired. To examine funding process. So what recommendations did you implement as a result of that report? And also what have been the results of the changes you've implemented? And John, I think I'm looking at you, but I don't know.
Lisa, are you going to start us?
John is strictly a numbers guy.
You going to get started, Lisa?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. So I'll, I'll hit, those are three main recommendations that I'll highlight. So the PSU report recommended that we create a small grants fund to improve the equity of access for smaller organizations who are generally not as able to compete in the large funding rounds. So we did implement that recommendation and during the pandemic, in fact, and started a small grants fund and they have granted, they have made seven grants to small organizations that were serving marginalized populations. None of those organizations have been funded by PCL in the past. So none of them had successfully competed in the large funding round, which was our goal. PSU report also, or the group there recommended that we form a community advisory board. So there would be an ongoing mechanism. We have always done community engagement before we run a funding round, but they recommended we have an ongoing board for a way that there's an avenue for community to participate in the levy governance on an ongoing way, not just before funding rounds. So we went through the process to create a community council to advise both the levy staff and also the allocation committee on policy and funding. That council began meeting this year and is set to make their first set of recommendations to the allocation committee in June. And then the last area that was a big focus for the PSU report was to, was around how we conduct the funding process and write the applications. And with the result being that they wanted to make sure we funded programs that were very focused on good and quality equitable practices within their organizations and that also reflected in terms of their staff and board, the identities of the people that were being served in the programs. So we changed our funding application to focus much more and to weight much more heavily applicants' equity practices, so how they demonstrated those practices and also their results. And one of the results we saw in the 2019 funding round, which is the most recent funding round that we, large grant funding round that we ran, using that changed application process, we saw that the majority of organizations that we funded had staff and board that reflect the race and ethnicity of the, you know, to the identifications, racial and ethnic identifications of the clients that the organization serves. So I hope I could state that clearly enough. So the idea is the staff and board have similar racial and ethnic profiles as the, as the people that they are serving. So the majority of organizations we funded after that round, that was the case. But that's, that's one of the results that I would say of making that change to our application process and also monitoring on an annual basis to see that that continues to be true.
I will add that I came on right after that report was given. So I've been able to experience the, actually taking the recommendations and doing something with them. We all know that sometimes recommendations are given and nothing happens with them. And so it was, especially around the small grants, large, small organizations can't always, they can't compete, but also it's not, it doesn't work with their budgets when they get too, you know, you don't want to receive a gift that's twice your annual budget because then you don't have the capacity to actually expend and build your organization organically. So what I noticed, Director Pellegrino, is that the people coming to the meetings from the small grant community were really close to the ground with the relationships and especially with new arrivals and refugee grants that were given. And during COVID, I can only imagine what their isolation was like. And so it was really gratifying to know that it started, in my opinion, just in time with the small grants. I think it was a very good strategy during that time period. And that was the one that sticks out the most. I think the community advisory board, I've had the pleasure of welcoming them and it's going to be great to get different perspectives. We meet bi-monthly. It's a great meeting, but to have another community group giving more insight, I think especially with the small grants community becoming into the fruition with this, with the Portland Children's Levy is really good timing. And so I could see them working hand in hand. So it feels more inclusive than it did when I was looking at it from afar 10 years ago.
That's great. I, I, I think I can give you a heads up that I'm very interested in community advisory boards. I've served on a number of them. And one of my stock questions every year to at least one of our organizations is, so you have this community engagement element, this advisory group, and they give you, they give you recommendations. So can you point to one, you know, in particular that you took and how it affected your operations or how you implemented that recommendation? So I suspect, I mean, this is year one, so we'll be back again after 100 years. We'll be back again next year. And I think you can anticipate a question about, you know, that.
Yeah, I look forward to that. I think they've had two meetings now?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So absolutely, yeah. You don't want to do rubber stamp community engagement. That's like the opposite of what it stands for.
I think more frequently, community engagement where we ask the community to provide input, but then just do whatever we were going to do beforehand anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So we did want to dig in a little bit in the next question to the new community council. And we wondered if you could talk to us a little bit about what their focus is going to be in their, you know, inaugural year.
Like I kind of mentioned this earlier, I know I welcomed them. I guess it's been their first meeting, they've had one since. And I'll just say that the enthusiasm of the group, and you could tell they're, they're going to be, they're going to have strong opinions. And so I look forward to what they will bring to us. And I, I'll just say one more time, the, I think it's elegant that it's being introduced shortly after we also implemented the small grants program. That's evolving the way the Portland Children's Levy will continue to work going forward. So I, I look forward to the value that they're adding. Is there anything that you want to add to that, Director Pellegrino?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of things just to broadly answer the question about, you know, where were the focus, you know, kind of head in this next year? So the first area that they're going to focus on in the, in the short term is shaping the broader community engagement process that we the broader community engagement process that we do before. So if the levy is renewed and we make new grants, there is not only, the community council will be one avenue of bringing community voice into what we're doing, but we, we need to do a broader process than that. And so they are going to help be the shaper of what does that look like? Who, what community should we be engaging with? How should we be engaging people? What should we, you know, should we hire someone to help us? So who should that be, you know, like advising that process and, and create, helping create it? And that, that whole process usually takes about a year to roll out. So it's going to be kind of an ongoing advice and course correction process. The other major thing that if the, if we move forward and the levy is renewed and we're giving you grants, they're going to take a role in the funding process as well. So shaping what that funding process looks like, that's always a set of questions that for, like we, we just described how PSU report and also we hired a contractor last time, an equity consultant, Empress Rules, and they helped us shape our funding process. So the community council is going to take an active role in that. So what is the funding application like? What are the criteria that we, that get judged for application? What's the review process look like? What's the recommendation process look like? So all of those kinds of questions that are sort of policy and procedure about how the money goes out into the community, they'll be consulting about that. So those are the two main focus areas I would say upcoming.
That's super helpful. Thank you. And on the governance part, I know that the ballot measure mentions that the investments are subject to citizen oversight. Can, just so I'm clear on kind of the structure, is your, in your mind, is that the allocation committee or is that, you know, this new kind of community council or some other group?
Yeah, no, the allocation committee is, and so there is the ballot measure and there's also this act that goes with it that people don't tend to read it because it's longer, but, but that specifically names the allocation committee. They are our formal oversight for the day-to-day operations and decisions. Their, so the allocation committee also has to make their recommendations to city council. So city council is the ultimate arbiter on what goes forward in terms of grants. So the idea is that the community council will be making recommendations to the allocation committee about how they should move forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying that.
Something tells me the good doctor that is from, formerly from PSU won't forget this, but I think what success could look like in a couple of years is that we see more of those grassroots organizations that didn't have the bandwidth to apply for these grants in the small grants program to be aided by the community council's work as well. That would be one parameter I think we could look at.
What's the threshold for the small grants program? Like what's the, what is, what qualifies as a small grant versus these large grants?
Is it 60,000 is the maximum? 60,000 per year? So we did a set of three-year grants, so they were 180,000 was the top. There's a qualification on the organization side. They can't have revenues in their last close fiscal year over a million dollars.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
So rolling along on community engagement, which is definitely an area of passion for me, we saw in the budget documents, the decision to add a new community engagement coordinator to the staff. I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit about that position and if there was a plan to add any additional staffing beyond, beyond that in the near future?
So the position for the community engagement coordinator that was specifically hired kind of for two main purposes. One, to staff this new community council that we were going to bring on board because they have to be convened, they have to meet, they have to have agendas, they have to, their recommendations have to be carried forward to the allocation committee. So that staff is in charge of that. And also to assist in this broader community engagement process because we anticipated the levy was renewed, we're going to be engaging in that again. And that's a big process to go through. And so we would need additional staffing to help with that. So those are the primary purposes. And, you know, we, that was also the advice of, in the PSU report as well, have staffing that would be dedicated to that. As far as any plans to hire additional staff, I would say we anticipate hiring a data analyst would be the next position to ideally transfer the levy from, we use an Excel-based data tracking system, which is pretty old-fashioned these days, to move to an integrated database system for the grantee data management. And we have hoped to be able to do that ourselves and we don't really have the bandwidth. So I think we've reckoned with the fact we're probably going to have to hire a person who's got more data specialized skills than, than the grant manager and other staff have.
Thank you.
I really loved your answer.
Yeah.
One of, one of the benefits for having served on the commission for eight years is I was here five years ago when we held this hearing for the levy period that's in its fourth and approaching fifth year. And so my question is primarily to this end of the table where we have our policymakers, the commissioners. As recently as just five years ago, Commissioner Saltzman at this hearing talked about a local option levy still being a temporary funding mechanism. This levy, if successful with the voters, will now be 25 years old when my colleagues are here five years from now. So the question is, have there ever been or are there any efforts to look at something other than a local option levy or alternatively using these dollars to leverage other dollars?
All right, let me start by saying, and then this is more from wearing my career hat before I had this office. Permanent funding is kind of something in the nonprofit world you scratch your head about because you're always, always trying to make your case to have diversified revenue streams come in to fulfill your mission to get results. And we don't have a government system set up to, to do that without going further and, and getting private grants and such to fulfill those purposes. So like the one reason why this is so important for the nonprofit community is because it's multi-year and those are the best gifts when you're running any nonprofit. That gives you some sustained funding. I know board members from the profit sector would, I think, go through this period of time trying to understand the difference between how we run our, our systems because they would have a product and the consumers need this product. We have consumers that need this product as well, but we don't have permanent system set up for revenue that, that we wish and our needs keep increasing. And so I just think that, I probably would never have answered that question that way. So I'm kind of backing up by that. But I'm also clarifying how important it is that we only give money to nonprofits that are building diversified revenue streams, that are leveraging the investment, looking to get matching gifts from that. So the organizations that are going to be successful are the ones that take these funds, which are multi-year, and then leverage those to bring in more revenue to make their case. So.
Well, I, I won't be here, but when the parks local option levy comes up, when we were at that hearing, what, about two years ago, it was also identified as a temporary funding source until a permanent source of funding was determined.
Yeah. Well, as your current Parks Commissioner, yeah.
The question is, what is the role of local option levies and should we stop calling them temporary if the intent is for the vehicle to be permanent financing?
Yeah, I, I will say that with the $800 million backlog in parks deferred maintenance, we have a lot of long-term financial stability that we must seek. Anytime we're talking about our most precious investments in our community, our most precious assets, children and youth would of course be one of them. Our parks are definitely one of the gems of this city. Our job is to figure out how to continue to take care of them well for the people who live in Portland so that we have a long-term economic plan, which is of course investing in children and youth and where we continue to attract families and anyone to move to Portland when you have great park, park system. And so I, I'm just right now in the middle of understanding that budget. You could, you saw that we're exploring what a park district looks like. I know we're kind of doing mission creep at the moment perhaps with the question and the dialogue we're having. But I just want you to know that our job is to make sure we're getting impact from those investments. So my job is to ensure that. So when I hear that Director Pellegrino talks about hiring a budget analyst or a, a data analysis, that's important because then we can help bid bandwidth and capacity within our network, especially with our smaller organizations, so that they can really measure success and that we can know that we're on the right track. I think we need a lot more accountability with the public and that's what the data metrics will help provide.
Clarity with the public is important here.
I might make a point that's somewhat adjacent to the children's levy. Being the relatively new guy on city council, what I'm struck by is some of the real imbalances in our approach to financing in terms of the various pieces that the city connects. And we have some real structural weaknesses in the way we finance infrastructure, public safety that are, parks that are multi-generational deficits. And we're dependent on general funds every cycle to support those. So what does that say about what we do about the children's levy? I just would put that out there as the context in which we operate. We were going to have some come to Jesus moments as a city in terms of how we finance our various programs. And I say that, the least religious city in America, come to Jesus moment. But in terms of how we approach our various demands and we are also operating in a context in which some of our public partners have taken significant tax proposals to the voters and they've repeatedly approved them. And we're now one of the highest, if not the highest taxed cities in the country. That changes the appetite of voters the next time around. So that is less to do with the children's levy. But when we think about the long-term capital structure of, and finance structure of city government and the things it does, we need a broader, long-term conversation there as to the, the shiny objects that we take to voters and its impact on some of our existing requirements. And again, that's more than the children's levy, it's just the context where we operate when we talk about short-term versus long-term commitments. Just throw that out there.
Thank you for your observations.
And then, since we're here, the, the fact that the children's levy has a system in place that we can, I think we can all stand behind. It has a, they have to do proposals, it's competitive. We give annual, we annually evaluate them. We make decisions on even giving money back if it's not being expended at, at the degree that, that we were talking about earlier. And we'll have to look more into that. And it has a 5% administrative fee. It's a lockbox too. It's like this is for this purpose and it doesn't creep outside of it. And then we keep evolving based on the needs. So actually, I don't like the word best practice because I think you should always look for better practices. But this is probably one of the better practices we have in the city. And if we could get all of the granting that we do in the city more in alignment with this type of discipline, I think the voters would be very satisfied with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for the robust conversation and discussion. I will leave the last two minutes for the city to make any final remarks they'd like to, to voters about the children's levy measure.
I'm going to ask if my colleagues would like to say anything before I close out.
I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Rubio, I know you're out there.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's been a great conversation and I really want to thank the TSCC for their, their really thoughtful questions. And also you, Commissioner Ryan, and Lisa and team for your leadership. I just want to just briefly state, state a couple of things. I just want to lift up the levy staff for being very adaptive in how you've provided services over the years by looking at data, responding to issues raised by partner, community-based organizations, and also recalibrating when needed. And we talked a little bit about this today, about how, how that happened during the pandemic. Also, again, want to acknowledge, you know, the, the brilliance behind the small grants fund and the, the community advisory council as a way to hear more broadly from the public. And this is important. And the reason I'm underscoring it is because it not only expands, you know, public trust for what we're doing, but also enables really everyone who may not even crosswalk with this fund ever, but to have the chance to see the real life impact. And just like Commissioner Ryan was talking about when he talked about impact instead of just the outputs, but the, the life impact of these investments on children. And here at the city, we focus a lot on adults a lot of the time. But, you know, just as equally, if not more important, is the children and how they start their lives. And that's really going to define who we are as a city. So just wanted to put my two cents in about how proud I am that our city has the Portland Children's Levy.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. And just, I'd like to add, and it's great to work with a fellow nonprofit executive on, on the council that also built a big organization called Latino Network. And again, it's just great on the council to have that type of life experience in these roles. I just want to add that the nonprofits were so desperate during the beginning of COVID and that's when I entered. And there was a lot of fear. There was a tons of fear, which is all now well-founded. You're seeing the test scores in math and in reading that it really took a dip during COVID. We have a lot of catching up to do. But what I loved and what I noticed is how quickly the levy staff, they were nimble and they were authentic in the dialogue too. So we had meetings where, I'll put it this way, when I would receive money from some big foundations, it always felt like there was a wall up between what we were working on and then with how they were giving us the money. And what I like about the levy staff is that you get in there and have very authentic dialogue. So there was no, no one was playing any, they weren't trying to perform for us. They were saying, yes, this is hard. We're actually kind of confused on what to do. This is how we did our delivery systems. Now we're adjusting. So the fact that that type of dialogue was taking place gave me more confidence that we were on the right track and that we had a culture that's exactly the kind of culture when you're dealing with grantees. And so I wanted to give the staff a lot of kudos for that. So, and the seasoned staff, the fiscal oversight has been very refreshing. I just want to also thank all of you for being here today. Your questions are always so good. I know that we'll be losing a couple of people from this commission and I'm sure you'll have to recruit some of those same skill sets. It's, it's a little bit predictable perhaps who will ask what questions. So it'll be a mystery in two years on, on who will take that on. But I also wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask anyone who's watching to really, really take your time to go through all the ballot. Our children and families, especially those that are essential workers that struggled to get to work, that somehow kept providing for their children but weren't home when their kids were home, it was hard. And so we really need the children's levy now more than ever to help get our children back on track. It's been hard for me to witness being advocating for children and youth that we've left behind forever, especially kids of color and those in poverty. Many of them live east of 82nd. And we start to see really great results. And I just watched those really do a nosedive over the last three years. And so it's so important that we get back on track and know that our most important investment in our city is always going to be our children and youth. So thank you so much for the questions today.
Thank you, and I'll officially close our meeting.